All right. Call the March 6th City Council meeting. Order, Commissioner Smith, give us the prayer, pledge, and fact of the day, please, sir.
Let us pray. Our God, our Father, we come once again for your presence. Thankful for the many blessings you have bestowed upon us. For this opportunity to serve as servants of your city, we ask that all that we shall see and do be pleasing and acceptable in your sight. And thus, in Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fact of the day. On March 6th, 1836, after thirteen days of intermittent fighting, the Battle of Alamo comes to a gruesome end, capping off a pivotal moment in the Texas Revolution. Mexican forces are victorious in recapturing the fort, and nearly all the roughly 200 Texan defenders died, including front tiresman David Crockett. The defense of the Alamo remains a symbol of resistance and revolution. Fact of the day.
All right. Set of minutes. Need a motion to approve, and let's need some changes.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Gender review. We got any changes? Cliff, that you know of? Okay.
Tom O'Ro, sir.
Okay. And do you, are you the one to?
Call the shade meeting?
Yes, please.
I can be. Yeah, absolutely. So the council and its labor lawyer, Mr. Mandel, are about to go into a true exemption from the sunshine.
You need to turn your mic on.
Turn it, it's lit up.
Okay, okay.
Is that better?
There you go.
A true exemption from the sunshine law, and that is a labor negotiation shade meeting. And it's true in that it doesn't have any of the same requirements for a litigation shade meeting of a court reporter and all that stuff. There's going to be no transcript. But this is what is going to happen now. So they can discuss the status of negotiations with the fire union in this case and see if they can agree on some issues or figure out where to go from here. So the meeting, I think they predicted to last for about an hour. It could go less. It could go longer, I suppose. And once that's over, then the council will reconvene back in this room to pick up with the regular agenda. But that's what we're going to be doing, I guess, right now.
Okay. Can I just, before you do that? Because you asked about the minutes. I've been looking for a statement that was made a public comment, and it's not showing up in the February 21st minutes. So can I have that? And that would be the statement that Mr. Alex Klepper, when he spoke, it's not in the minutes here. And that's what I was looking for. It's been completely omitted from here for some reason.
So.
Yeah. Yeah, so I was looking for that to refresh my memory before we go into the meeting. But when you said, was there any?
Yeah.
Adjustments, and that's it. And I had the city clerk verify that, to verify when his appearance was here and his public comments.
I tell you what, why don't we do this? Let's just go back. We need to, let's table the minutes, and then we'll come back after the shade meeting, and we can.
Okay.
We can make that adjustment. How's that?
Very good. Thank you.
So I need a motion to rescind the approval of minutes. And. Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries now. We'll be back.
Yeah, I'll leave these minutes for you, Viera. Okay. Would you do me a favor and just kind of knock in here?
So we'll resume and then I'll get-
Call the city council meeting back to order. Got two presentations by Chief Wyllam.
I just want to go back to the minutes for a minute.
Okay, we got, we got-
Well, they were in the minutes in the, in the agenda and the internet or what happened on the computer, on the iPad, when I asked for it to be printed out so that I can read it, the page was not printed for me. But it is in, it is on the iPad, it is on the website, so we can approve the minutes.
Okay. Like to make a motion to approve the February 21st minutes?
Yes.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, chief.
Good afternoon, mayor, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen of the public. Sean Wyllam, Fire Chief, Apopka Fire Department. I'm here today to present on a recent training opportunity we had here at the Apopka Fire Department. And what an opportunity it was. This course dealt specifically with wildland urban interface situations. And we're going to get into more of what exactly that means in a few minutes. But as you recall, in January, there was a consent agenda item to approve the grant, which this was a grant funded class for $48,000. The interesting part about this, and the exciting part about this, is this is the first time that this course was taught in the state of Florida. So we kind of spearheaded that, that movement. Another interesting thing, this is the first time nationwide that a department actually reached out to specifically ask for this course. And I want to give kudos to Chief Knapp and the team for accomplishing just that. He's here behind me. He got the Sean and Sean show today, so. But again, another cool thing about this program is a train the trainer course. So now we're going to be able to offer this course specifically to other entities, other agencies in our area, in our region, and beyond. And something that we've always, you know, take, took pride in in leading our region as far as some of that stuff. So again, the title of the course, Responding to the Interface. So what is the interface? Wildland urban interface is, or WUI is, it's called for short. Basically, our fire department prides itself on responding to, or what we call an all hazards fire department. Anything from any hazards related to confined space, fires, EMS, extracations, things like that. And specifically with fires, all of our personnel, as we know, are state certified firefighters. At the academy, we're taught components and tactics dealing specifically with structure, structural firefighting, as well as firefighting and wildland fires. Many of us have actually furthered the training and gone on to wildland training and obtained certifications from the National Wildfire Coordinating Group and things like that. And now it's actually part of the state curriculum as well. So there is a training in both components of structural and wildland firefighting. But what wildland urban interface deals with is when both of these situations come together. When those wildfires threaten structures and homes. And as we know traditionally, Apopka has always been more of a rural area, but have quickly become suburban or very quickly becoming more of an urban setting. This course provided the missing component or bridges the gap. Hence the name Responding to the Interface. That's a transitional area between the two. And this picture here kind of illustrates, you know, things we're talking about. And it's important to understand, these types of fires don't just happen on the outskirts or in California, like you'll see a lot of the big fires and things like that. Even in Brevard County here, there's been several that, in the state of Florida that look like that. But this can happen in our neighborhoods. Simple grass fires in the green, green areas we have, or green space areas that we have can spark some of these fires and we have a threat to our, our structures in the area. Part of the prep for the course was to identify areas in which we could train, not only talk about the specific topics, but apply what we've learned into, you know, regions or areas in a realistic setting. So Camp Weewall is actually a great, a great location, we identified. They were able to accomplish just that. So we're able to take what we were learning and apply it real time. One of the components the course dealt with was how to triage houses. And triage kind of look at a house, identify things we can do, what we can do to help, what we call soften the exposure. And how to work on, prepare these structures and limit the hazards and also chances of igniting if a rapid moving wildfire comes into it. Some of the documentation there, that they, they went over in the course. There's them actually participating with members of the IFF, learning how to again identify some of these things. Some of the terms are out there, prep and go. You know, if we came up on a house and it's, and we have an exposure issue, can they simply work on that, that house, prep it as best as possible to prevent that ignition and then move on? Or decision to prep and defend, if it's a great enough threat that they need to prep it and also stay and defend the house to prevent it from igniting as well. Simple things such as removing doormats was a topic. Embers and things that can land on doormats and actually ignite the doormat itself and cause fires to happen. So something as simple as that, dealing with gutters, you know. When's the last time everyone raised a gutter, or cleaned their gutters, be honest? So some of those things were discussed as well. And again, this is kind of some of the pictures from the course. One of the other harder components in any fire situation is the advancement of hose lines. Typically, when a hose line is deployed in a structural setting, it's charged and it does become extremely difficult to move at that point, very labor intensive. Based on the weight, the location of the hose, things like that. Even in wildland fires, we're actually taught not to deploy hoses, hoses so much, but more so stay with that brush truck or that, that apparatus and keep it a short length of hose. So we're able to move it very quickly. We're able to, and being able to, able, able to utilize those brush trucks and flow waters from those trucks. So one of the big things they talked about was how to load hoses for rapid deployment and also reloading, especially in these dynamic situations. So it's not just, you know, when we, on a structure fire, we pull a hose. In order to reload that hose, it almost takes a lot longer to reload that hose, get all the water out, things like that. So some of the things they taught us here were, were how to load the hose. Again, so we were able to transition that hose load and remember, the reloading component. This is in a very fluid situation, a dynamic situation where you pull a hose, you can reload it quickly and, you know, we're able to deploy it quickly. So the traditional way of reloading hose is not very conducive to the tactics that are needed in this situation. So you can see here is an example, also, oops. Also on the side of the apparatus and just showing some demonstrations of that as well. And of course, applying it all at the end, using what they learned to apply it to realistic situations. And as we like to say, deploying hoses and putting wet stuff on the red stuff. That's the most important component of that and what we were able to do with the course and learn a lot. I want to say a big thank you first and foremost to our department members to make this happen. Chief Knapp, of course, Captain Dre Wilson, Lieutenant Renee Beasley, who helped us track down a lot of these structures and able to provide some of that. The IFF local and our instructors who are literally from around the country. We had instructors from Washington State, from Maine, from Miami. In fact, one of our instructors, Chief Knapp told me the other day, was actually on the fire in Texas. So that's, you know, we had a lot of good experience there. So again, thank you. And with that, Chief Knapp's here to answer any questions as well.
Any questions for chief or chief Knapp?
No, I just want to say, I was out there while you guys were doing this. It was really fun to watch. It was funny, I guess there was, part of the training is to have a, somebody act as a homeowner that can take care of their own house, basically. So you had a firefighter that was acting as a homeowner that knows better than the firefighters and has a hose, is getting in the way of the firefighters trying to do their training. And then he grabbed a ladder out of their truck at one point, just causing chaos. So that was really fun to watch, but it's really cool to see that we're kind of doing some groundbreaking stuff. So I appreciate your effort in this and thank you for what you've done.
I'm going to say the same thing. I spent the day out there with the, with the fire department and kind of sat through each of the sessions just to get an idea. And I just thought it was, it was excellent training. Not only were the instructors very hands-on, but I saw a great participation from our firefighters and a real welcoming to learn something new in the training. So thank you because we spent, you spent the whole day out there. I spent, you know, a few hours. But then when you started to actually run through the practice, it was interesting to see, you know, the lectures at the different sessions all come together. So again, I want to give credit to our chief and the entire fire department because I think we're the only ones in the state of Florida. And that's what the instructors said, that this was something that had been wanting to bring to the state of Florida and they just couldn't find a fire department that would welcome this training. And we are the first. And so now we're going to be able to train other fire departments. So congratulations to the chief for bringing this training program here to, for us and being the first.
Thank you. All right. Next up, chief again.
All right. Again, good afternoon, Sean Wyllam, Fire Chief. As you, everyone is probably aware of, there has been a collaborative effort that's come together for measles vaccination initiative. Last Friday, at 1:00, the mayor called together several different key stakeholders to a meeting to discuss the possibility of vaccinations in our area. Members that were there were the Florida Department of Health, Orange County School Board, Metro Health, Florida Farm Workers, and Hope Community Center. That collaborative meeting was made to discuss when and where we're going to be, the Department of Health is going to be providing vaccinations. And, you know, what, of course, as a city, we wanted to make sure that we can help out however, however way we could. On March 4th, 9:00 AM, that was this Monday, there was a press conference held at the Florida Farm Workers Association where they announced where the vaccinations are going to take place. The first one actually took place yesterday, March 5th, from 2:00 to 7:00. Next one's going to be March 8th at the Florida Farm Workers Association from 2:00 to 7:00. The Hope Community Center South, 800 South Hawthorne Avenue, is going to be March 11th and March 12th from 2:00 to 7:00. And Hope Community Center North, which is 116 North Park Avenue, is going to be March 14th through the 15th from 2:00 to 7:00 as well. One of the, you know, one of the questions out there, of course, and some of the information we want to get out there and the Department of Health is wanting to communicate is exactly what is measles? As we know, it's a highly contagious vaccine preventable disease. It is mainly childhood, but it can affect anyone who is, any age really. Preschool, adolescents, and inadequately immunized, excuse me, immunized individuals are the major cases in the United States. Typically, symptoms will appear seven to 14 days after a person's been affected, including high fever, cough, runny nose, red watery eyes. And within three to five days is when the rash actually occurs. The best way, again, as I say, to prevent it, again, prevention is the best medicine, is to get a vaccination. It's all part of the MMR vaccine, which helps present, prevent measles, mumps, and rubella. Again, anyone can get measles, but it typically is, for children under five years old and over 20, are most likely to suffer the complications from measles. Anything from ear infections can occur in one in 10 children with permanent hearing loss actually being a possibility. Diarrhea in one in 10, pneumonia in one in 20. Encephalitis being, you know, one of the, one of the critical components, the swelling of brain can occur in one of, in 1,000 children who catch measles. This can actually lead to convulsions, deafness, and definitely disabilities in their future. Death can occur in one to two out of 1,000 who catch measles. And obviously, pregnant women have a risk as well. People with compromised immune systems are especially at risk for the complications as well. So again, that's the big push from the DOH, the people who are unvaccinated or even inadequately vaccinated. So one thing we learned too is even if you're exposed to it, they're going to give you the same vaccine if you, whether you're exposed or you actually contract it for the first time. So again, also international and domestic regions with ongoing outbreaks. And people who have been exposed with some, some sort of measles are absolutely at risk. So with that, I can answer any questions regarding the-
Any questions for the chief?
So my concern, because I did send you an email. I, I realized that you've targeted the farm workers and the whole community, which is the Hispanic community. But have we gone to the public, all the public schools to let them know that this vaccination program is there? Because it is trending on Facebook through farm workers, but it's in Spanish. So it, it almost feels like it's only targeting one particular community.
No, that's, it's, it's targeting everybody, you know, that being, that's the biggest, there, in fact, it's being released in four different languages, Creole.
Oh, it is?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I, okay, because I checked the social media and I only saw it in Spanish.
Yeah. The DOH is releasing in English, Spanish, Portuguese, Creole, you know, multiple different, you know. And it's, and that's the biggest thing is, you know, that, when we met with everybody, that was the biggest thing out of the DOH's mouth was an opportunity. You know, obviously with the heightened sense, you know, going through a pandemic, you know, in the past couple of years and the, you know, the recent, you know, things, things on the news. It's an opportunity to provide information and opportunity. And I think that's the biggest thing is to educate, disseminate the information and then provide that opportunity if there isn't an opportunity out there.
Just clarify for the public, the ages that we are actually targeting? Because in the, in the Spanish Facebook, it actually says no adults. Does it include any of the high school kids or is it just elementary and below elementary toddlers? Because they specified like-
I believe it was-
A child from 12 months to like 20 months. And then they said elementary kids up to 13. But what about for high school kids?
Well, see, here's the, here's the reality is to get into kindergarten, you have to have MMR-
Right.
Or you have to have a religious exemption. So the, so what we're trying to target is, the reason we were trying to target the, the under kindergarten is, so let's say you're homeschooled, or not homeschooled, but you're, you're not, haven't met kindergarten yet to meet those- to meet those, the requirements, we, that's the reason we were targeting that group. Now, I know that there was one school that was below 90%, which was Lockhart. So the nearest school to downtown Apopka is Lockhart that's, that's below the 90%. And 90% is kind of the key number. They say if you get below 90%, then there's a chance for spread of the measles. So what we were trying to do is target those, we were trying to target the ones under kindergarten age only because they hadn't been, there's a chance they've not been immunized because they haven't gotten to, where kindergarten is requirement.
Right.
We had, we had, I was over there yesterday and, and they had one of the, a girl about seven or eight that had one shot and she was getting her booster, which is a two-shot regimen. But she was there to get her second one. So I, did you get a, did they get you a call back on how many they?
They had one, no, that's okay. They had one confirmed, but they, they're not sure because it all has to go through Florida shots. It's a computer program. Somebody take a day or two to update. So.
So did they get a big turnout yesterday?
Just one so far.
There were more than one, but I don't?
Exactly. It's, it's on record. It has to go through a computer system. That's what they told me today is, you know, it takes a couple of days to update. So we should have known more in the next couple of days.
So is it open? So the question is, is it open to high school students?
Yes.
Yeah.
Everybody, adults as well. Yeah.
Oh, adults. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's kind of what, again, like Mayor was saying, it's not just, it's the school age kids, but also their siblings. You know, if there's, you know, they live at home and they have, you know, multiple siblings and things like that. So it's, you know, again, again, the big thing now is it's the, the information's out there. You know, there is no outbreak, you know, in necessary, in our area, but you know, we're vulnerable. And that's something that we want to make sure, you know, however the, you know, that's been the city's biggest initiative. We have initiatives in the past with hepatitis A. We've assisted the Department of Health with COVID vaccinations. So as a city, I know we've been very proactive in helping out, you know, in situations. And that's the biggest thing they want to see is us to be able to prevent something from happening. So again, education and opportunity.
Do you know what the total number of measles vaccinations they made available to?
No, I don't.
They just said?
Yeah, they got plenty.
They said they had plenty. So they don't think they'll run out.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, public comment. Susan?
Sylvester Hall?
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. I missed the last couple of meetings. I was out celebrating my anniversary on a cruise. So I try to make it a point to be at every meeting. And I think that's critical for all the citizens, not only in the city of Apopka, but throughout our, throughout our state. I want to say this, like I always said, in the city of Apopka, the state of Florida and in our country, we had a critical time in our country. Too many good people sit by and watching bad things happen and not doing anything about it. When you experiment with drugs, you have a comfort zone. You get your high and you, you know, you're feeling good. That's that comfort zone that everybody's in. But when you don't do anything about it, teams start falling out. You lose your job, you lose your relationship, you start losing all kinds of weight, you get all sick. That's what we're headed for. When we sit around and we remain silent, that's what we're headed for. The world will not be destroyed by those who do evil, but those who sit by and watch and do nothing. When we normalize the abnormal, we desensitize the truth. And I need to add to that, of course, sometimes we don't even want to hear the truth or the truth doesn't matter. Let's look at something that's abnormal. I've been coming to these meetings so, for the last two years now. When we lose simple things out of the minutes. And then we act like, how did that happen? Now, like I said, I've been going for two years. Ms. Bone, I don't know, there's countless of times where the minutes have been left out. If I was the mayor, you and I have some serious issues. So I don't know whether you're that incompetent or somebody is telling you not to do that. These are things that we just normalize and we sit in here like it, it don't matter. Our first responders are retired military. Our first responders, we love them. We give them all the praise. But look at what's going on in the city of Apopka. Look what the fire department is going through. Simply because they weren't endorsed by the mayor. They weren't, they didn't endorse the mayor. But we sit around like it's no big deal. How can this comment be left out? When you look at things like that, I look at the homeless. I've mentioned many times, there was $150,000 laying out there for the homeless. It still hasn't been dedicated to the source. We just had a homeless gentleman shoot up the place. They had grenades in his buggy. But you don't really hear about that. But when the little young man shooting in the park, you heard about that every day for almost two weeks. So when you look at things and you just normalize it like it's just normal, we don't care. And then the people like myself, a concerned citizen, holding you accountable to do the job that you've been sworn to do, we get labeled as troublemakers. Or I don't know how the mayor puts up with it. It's your job to react to every citizen that comes up here regardless of their presentation. If a young man, if a homeless neighbor, not a homeless person, a homeless neighbor walk up and say, hey, look, this is a guy coming with a gun. He's, he's starting to shoot up places. I disregard that because he's homeless. When anybody present anything to you, look at what they're presenting to you and check it out and make sure it's factual. If it's factual, then it's your job and your responsibility to deal with it. If it's not, you take it in one ear and go out the other ear. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Appreciate it.
These things matters. I know you're going to cut me off, but these things matters. Principle matters, character matters.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
You're welcome.
Najee?
Hello, everyone. I'm Coach Najee with Central Florida Soccer Club. A little week, let's see, a week ago on Monday, our club had our second annual town hall meeting. Overwhelming majority of the questions from our members in the community were no surprise, fields, fields and fields. I'm just going to go over a couple of questions here that for the most part were already addressed with our members, but I just wanted the council to hear them. First one was, how do we go about getting more fields at the complex? Second one, where's the bottleneck getting additional fields developed at the complex? Third one, what can we do better to ensure that the city of Apopka maintains our fields, develops more fields and brings out, bring out rental rates in line with other youth, youth groups in the area? And the last one was, there's still holes that need to be filled at the fields. Why do we not have a mound of sand readily available to fill holes that are hidden? So for the most part, we pretty much address all of those with, with our members and other members in the community. What I'm here for is regarding, back in early January 2022, the city unveiled an eight-phase $32.9 million expansion plan for the Northwest Recreation Complex. According to the Apopka Chief article that was published on January 21, 2022, funding for the project would come from the $600,000 a year that would be freed up after the bond was paid in March of 2022 and of course, also from impact fees. The article also said that the city has contracted CEI Engineering Associates to take on this project. So my question is, what's the holdup? According to the city, the money is there, the need is there, the demand is there and the support from the community is there as well. Not just for a couple of fields, but really to go and take on this large scale project that's, that was outlined years, years ago. Again, here I am again, a couple of weeks later, after our first presentation here, to ask what can we as residents of the city and as a club that serve, that's serving the community do to help bring this much needed expansion to fruition? Thank you.
Okay, Rod Olson?
Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane in Apopka. Mayor Commissioners, thank you for what you do for us and the community. I know it's a tireless job. Several points today. One, I enjoyed learning about Apopka Black resident leaders last week at the Black History Month celebration. The shame it was for many, many standpoints, one, it's important taste to have at the end of the month. Most communities ran month-long programs addressing historical facts, current issues directly tied to the Black, Black history and address the future plans as far as how we're going to preserve and move forward. I propose for 2025 that we have a month-long program like most other communities did. Maybe the first week being focused on historical context, late state, local, national and global. Second week maybe focus on the same group of people with what initiatives are going on right now. Third week, recognize the local, state, national and global leaders. And the fourth week, focus on plans for Apopka moving forward is how we're going to, how we're going to effectively address not only acknowledging the history, but look at our other heritage as well. We look at our Latino and we look at our native heritage here. We could build a lot of events to bring people into this community in and around educational programs that would cover this and at the same time, recognize the wonderful contributions these people made. Let me shift a little bit here in the aspect of development. I won't get up and speak at every new development that's proposed. But just so you know, it's 650 new students are going to enter our system with what's a new business today, 650. And that's arranged depending upon the type of housing, a 30 to 45 students per 100 households or 100 doors. We have to look at that. We need to look at slowing the train down. Charter review. When I read a couple of articles recently, it appears that we're one of the few, if any, communities our size that have a strong mayor type of government. Most have a strong manager. Whether or not we go with and stay with a strong mayor or strong, strong manager, I think that if it is to stick with a strong mayor, we need to look at the finance director, police chief, fire chief, city clerk, city manager and attorney should be a commission decision as to who gets hired and who gets relieved of their duties. Southwest Recreation Complex, Najee? Tea off you. You can build right now probably eight to 10 fields on that open vacant land between gate four and gate five by the football stadium. There's no reason we shouldn't be doing it now. Clearly, it's identified based upon our growth that there's more than a need for those property, for that property. It's going to be cheaper to do it now than to do it later. This approach is similar to unfortunately, a lot of the approaches of the city as we look at putting a Band-Aid on an arterial bleed. We have a need right now to have those fields developed. We should develop them now. Finally, just the aspect of we have an important election come up and I want to encourage everyone to please get out and vote. Thank you.
Kaitlin Kiyasa?
Kisheta. I think my handwriting was a little off. I broke my wrist a couple of months ago, so sorry. Hi, everybody. Nice to see you all again. It's been a while since I've been up here. But I wanted to bring you guys a couple of updates from Main Street, mainly with an event that we have coming up. But first, I'd wanted to thank the mayor for putting together the Main Street Apopka Workshop. Florida Main Street's coming down to give a workshop to the commission on March 20th at 9:00 AM. I hope a lot of people come just to learn about what a Main Street program is. Catherine's going to do a great job. I've listened to her speak and she's just fabulous. So thank you for putting that together. I appreciate that a lot. So I just want to go ahead and read quickly a excerpt out of a press release I just threw out there to our media regarding some art projects that we have coming up, one main one. So as Main Street Apopka or MSA continues to lay our foundation, planning meetings, workshops, cleanups, placemaking activities and promotional events, one goal has been set above the rest for us and that is to change the image of downtown Apopka. See, while the bones of downtown are suitable and ripe for high quality change, its reputation and atmosphere leave much to be desired. To revolutionize this image, we launched a downtown art competition and developed Art on Main Street. In February, we called for local artists to submit original works to the competition. The art needed to be a visual celebration of Apopka's natural beauty and resources existing in partnership with the human influences of downtown businesses. The deadline to submit was March 2nd and four finalists were chosen. The community is now asked to go online and vote for their favorite piece. And at the end of the voting period, the piece with the most votes wins and is elected by MSA as the new image for downtown Apopka. Now, this image will be translated into logos, murals and other promotional materials. And hopefully, we look to bring these to the city council one day for further adoption as the official downtown Apopka image. All four pieces are available for live viewing, March 9th, so that's this weekend through April 5th over at Three Odd Guys Brewing. And you can go, you can also go online and check out the pieces. We got some great photos of them at www-mainstreetapopka.com art. And then finally, the winner will be announced during Art on Main Street, which is a pop-up art gallery on April 6th from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM, located at the courtyard behind the Central Florida Tang Sudo Karate Studio. That's right there on the corner of Park and Main. There's a little courtyard back there that we're going to dress up and turn into a gallery. And it will feature the four finalists with their artwork, other local artists, live music, beer and wine and an interactive community art piece, which will be fun for the entire family. We also have some sponsorships available. So if there are any small businesses or giant businesses who would like to help out and make this event a success, we would love to speak with you. And you can email mainstreetapopka@gmail.com. And then the final thing with my last 20 seconds that I'm going to talk is the Apopka Dog Mayor Program is kicking off here soon. We're going to be doing some just super casual meetups over at the dog park here. A lot of people don't know that we have a dog park and so we wanted to bring a little exposure to that. So we're going to meet at the dog park. Again, super casual. We have a trainer that's going to come, give some tips and tricks with handling your dogs. It's a great social outing. It's going to be every Saturday in March from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM. So I hope to see you all at our art gallery on April 6th and I hope to see everybody there really and go online and vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. To confirm and thank you for giving us all this information, is this, is this your program?
Uh, no, no, sir.
Oh, this is something else? Oh, here I'm writing on this thinking.
Yeah, I think that's. It seemed just like it. What is this then?
Shakina Jackson and who's the other? Oh, I should know.
Oh, okay.
Okay, sorry. I thought this was you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You got a lot of good stuff, so.
Art seems to be the theme this year.
Okay, so this isn't you. Sorry.
Sorry. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you.
Roy Bell?
Leroy Bell, Maude Helen. I want to start out with the audit. And I want to go back to the first time this mayor came to be mayor. You remember you came in, you came in talking about money that was missing. And you wanted to get to the bottom of it. And if anything was wrong, they need to be held accountable. So what I'm saying to you today is we need an audit. Not a specific audit, we need an audit like autopsy. When you go to an autopsy, they look over everything to find out what the cause of death. And at this city, the cause of death is going to be you. But anyway, on the other hand, I want to talk about the election. We stood here with this line, Rodriguez lawyer that you had, tried to jump around and said that if we wanted anything with early voting, we needed to go over to supervise the election. Everybody remember that. Disenfranchisement is what you're doing. The whole city council. The whole city council voted that. I had to apologize to Commissioner Smith because I said that you picked one day and a time, but actually, you picked another day. You remember that? And you brought me the paper, and I said, if you bring me the paper, I'm wrong. I apologize. I apologize, correct? So, what I'm saying is this. I went up to vote the other day, and when I get up to early voting, I get ready to walk in and come to find out I can't go in until 10 o'clock. And come to find out, early voting is from 10 o'clock to 6 o'clock, when we already had established before that voting is from 7 to 7. Why is that? It's simply because it's a way of disenfranchising people that are not able to vote before they go to work and after they get off of work. Most people get off of work at 5:00, and once they get home, this place is closed. What is this for? This is for this man to control the vote, because he know if you look at any exit poll here in Apopka, the majority of the people that vote for him is voting during what? Absentee ballot. And if you remember, he said if we did early voting last time, it's a waste of money because we're going to get 20, 25 people. But look at the exit poll for early voting last time. We voted, had more voters last time in early voting in the history of Apopka. You remember that? So, yes, we need a forensic audit. The fire chief just stood up here and said prevention is the best thing, and I agree with him, and I don't agree with that guy on too much of nothing. I do agree with prevention. The prevention is this. Let's get the people out and keep this guy from being in power.
Good afternoon. Don't have a script today, so I'm just going to cover a few topics. First, real quick, I want to address Mr. Vavrik. Last week, or last, sorry, last meeting I spoke, I heard some rumblings that the comments I was attempting to clarify, I was trying to paint you as being untruthful. That's not the case. It was not my intention. My intention was to identify. Some things were said on our behalf that just miscommunication, and I was to clear it up, so I hope you accept an apology if that's the way that it was taken and by yourself. That being said, wanted to say thank you all for having the shade meeting this afternoon. Sorry to you all for having to wait for an extra hour, but it shows some initiative to hopefully get some things done, to get some issues we have sitting on the table collecting dust resolved. So, I do appreciate, and the guys at the stations also appreciate you guys taking this extra time to have these meetings, to get this resolved potentially. Another topic that I brought up last time, and I think it just got lost in the shuffle, we still have some issues that we don't have any clarity on. I'm hoping we can get that too. Mainly, the firefighters that live at Fire Station 6 currently, where are they going to live in the next few months? We've heard things. We've heard there's going to be moves, maybe moves, maybe a different trailer. We don't have, we have not been able to get any concrete information, and the guys who live at that station for a third of their lives are asking, can we please be told? Is there a plan? Are there four options, five options, no options? What are we doing? And then, so timelines on that, and if we could get a timeline on our station repairs that we've had kitchens with, you know, edges covered with duct tape and two-by-fours holding up cabinets for about a year. If we could get some kind of information on when we can expect to have these living conditions improved, that's really what I wanted to follow up with today. So, that's all I got. Thank you for your time.
Chief, you want to come down and talk about Station 6? Are you in a position to do that, or?
Charlie Allen, Fire Chief. Basically, what we're looking at now, and up to a couple of weeks ago, we were actually going to be able to stay in the current location. Things changed with a meeting with Advent Health, and they advised that they're moving forward and that we're going to have to move out. Since that, we've been having four or five different plans and backup plans in place. There is, you know, moving a trailer to a certain location. Like I said, the first time this issue came up, the biggest thing for me is obviously response times, where we're responding from to make sure that we're still providing the same level of care to the 58,000 people within our city, and also, at the same time, taking care of our men and women that work at Station 6. The basic components, there are a couple of different options, moving the current trailer. There's also options that we're looking at apartments right now that are very near to that location. I would rather have more concrete things to present. I'd really rather go out to Station 6 and talk to my men and women first to provide that information, and I'm 95% confident I'm going to have that news before the end of this week. So, it's something I really would.
When do they have to be out of the spot that they're in now?
The original discussion with Advent Health was July. They've wanted us to move up our timeline. There's no exact date at this point, but we've been meeting with them weekly to kind of provide updates of where we're at. Because they also have, another component of it is their trailer. They have their EMS trailer for their EMS staff right next to ours, so it's a working together to, you know, clear that entire area. So, there's.
Yeah, we thought we were going to be able to just work around just that, the footprint of the trailer, and because of the grade, the slope, they've got to level the whole place, so we don't have a choice but to move the trailer off the Advent property. Now, they, I mean, they've been wonderful trying to work with us. They even said they had a spot on the front of the parking lot that we could probably move the trailer to, but we got a couple of other options. Hopefully, like the chief said, we'll have, you know, some concrete information that he'll share with Station 6, and then if he'll share that with the council as well when you get that.
So, hoping by the end of the week then?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And then while you're here, are you able to update us on Station 6 itself?
Yeah, sure. In fact, some good news on that front too, and Mr. Shepherd actually just finished reviewing the contract. It's been back and forth with Miller, with, you know, the legal powers that be in finance, and we've actually got everything finished at 11:09 today. So, we are full on getting signatures done and moving forward.
And what's the next?
Believe me, there's no more person in this room that wants this to get going, so.
Sure. And then, so from, moving forward from here, is it, we're going to permitting, and so we're still kind of looking at that?
Permits are done.
Everything's done on that?
Yeah, everything upfront. It was literally just the actual contract itself.
Excellent. Good to hear. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Albert McKimmy.
Albert McKimmy, 3603 Golden Gem Road. I wish today for a change I could be the harbinger of good news, but as usual, same problems in Apopka. The city is feeling its residents, and too many people are doing nothing about it. Policy does not supersede the constitution. We're building this city offices like a fortress. Instead of welcoming residents in, I feel we're being held out. I want to be able to come here and discuss problems with the city. I want to be welcomed. I want to be a part of what the city is for the future, and only by communicating with staff and with commissioners can we do that. But all the time, it's locked doors, and we come here and we speak, and we feel that what we say is landing in deaf ears. One of the problems that I see is that sometimes we have problems in which we would have to define criminal intent, and criminal intent isn't always easy to define. We have a situation just now with respect to elections, and we have had word back from the people that we spoke to about it, saying that they wouldn't be comfortable moving forward with criminal intent because it's difficult to prove. However, they said that what we should have been doing is looking for a civil review. For weeks in, weeks out, I've come here and asked you commissioners to help us decide whether or not there was reasons to look at whether people had filled out forms correctly and honestly. That sadly hasn't been done, and it's a big disappointment to me, because if we come here and you're supposed to act on our behalf and to protect the residents, I feel on this particular occasion, I don't feel that you've really done what needed to be done. In terms of Fire Station 6, that was good news today. I'm glad to hear that we're getting some progress on it. But Brian, you said that you were working well with Advent Health. That's not the response that I'm getting from Advent Health. They've suggested that the city has been blocking all their permits for other things. They seem to feel there's some sort of retaliation going. You can smile, but again, you know, with the advent of all these new properties being built on Golden Gem Road, there's over 100 new properties already being inhabited on Golden Gem Road, and we're about to look at changing the comprehensive plan. So, whereas in the KPI, I think we're looking at about 12,000 houses, I would like to know where we stand with a new fire station to be built for that general area. Have we identified where we're going to be placed in that? And with the necessity for looking for new equipment months and months in advance, I think it's 14, 15 months in advance just to make orders, what are we doing to look at new equipment for those areas? And if the comprehensive plan is changed, and we're looking at buildings, I think they were asking for multi-story buildings, I haven't seen the request for it, but we currently can only really service buildings of four stories or five stories high. If we change the comprehensive plan to accommodate people in that area for six, seven-story buildings, have we looked at the possibility of how we're going to service that community? Thank you.
Okay, Michael Duran.
I came here today to express my concerns over the Apopka firefighters, Professional Firefighters Union contract. I don't need to tell you that there's still lack of proper leadership and management within the city of Apopka. It is extremely disheartening that our dedicated, hard-working firefighters have been working without a contract for over a year. It is absolutely ridiculous and very clear to many that it's just another stall tactic played by the city to push back on their own fire department. It is abundantly clear that there remains many cracks and fractures within the city that we claim to love and protect. Where does this end? Must another firefighter be killed? Must we continue to operate such a young department due to turnover? Young and less experienced firefighters is a recipe for another line of duty death. I know this all too well, and so do you. My family, for 600 days, has entered into a David versus Goliath-type fight with this city. We are nobody. We have no influence, no power, and no experience, yet we know what is wrong and, most importantly, what is right. We know that in order to protect and keep our firefighters safe, someone must speak up. Someone must fight, even if that means standing up to Goliath, even if it means to wage 100 wars only to win one. Our firefighters are not asking for anything out of the ordinary. They strive to be treated as equal partners. They strive to keep and retain their current staff to build more experienced and better-trained and safer firefighters. It protects them, and it protects the residents of this city that they faithfully serve. I am asking you, with your influence and your power and your experience, to put our firefighters first for once. Bring the union's contract to city council. It is your responsibility to protect them. At the end of the day, the decision is ultimately yours anyway. Let's stop kicking this same old can down the road and come to an agreement with your firefighters. They deserve nothing less than for you to close this gap and nonsense that continues to play out every day with this poorly managed city. Do nothing, and we will continue with a young and less experienced department. Do nothing, and look at yourself in the mirror when a family suffers the loss of their son or brother due to poor leadership and poor management in this city. Return the commitment to our union's firefighters that honorably serve this community by you serving them. Respectfully, thank you.
We have five concern agenda items. Does anybody need to pull any? If not, look for a motion to approve. Got a motion by Commissioner Blasquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, crossroads at Kelly Park.
Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to approve the crossroads at Kelly Park Phase 1A plat. The subject property is located south of Ondit Road, west of Effie Drive, north of Kelly Park Road, and east of Round Lake Road, approximately 31 acres in size. The plat proposes to create 175 residential lots as well as nine tracks for open space and amenities. Access to the development is proposed on Kelly Park Road via Spine Road, as well as connections to the proposed and future developments to the north, south, east, and west. Plat is consistent with the CSP construction site plan approved by the DRC on June 1st, 2023. The DRC recommends approval at its meeting on September 12, 2023. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the plat. The recommended motion is to approve the crossroads at Kelly Park Phase 1A plat. Staff is available for questions.
Any questions for Jean? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve the plat for the crossroads at Kelly Park Phase 1A.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, Oakview Plat.
Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to recommend approval, I'm sorry, this is a request to approve the Oakview Plat. The property is located on the southeast corner of Kelly Park Road and Round Lake Road, approximately 38.6 acres in size. The applicant has submitted the Oakview Plat for consideration of creating 113 lots, the entrance and Spine Road as well. This plat also dedicate two rights-of-way tracks to the perpetual use of the public and establishes three stormwater tracks and 14 open space recreation and amenity tracks. Access is proposed on Kelly Park Road via Laurel Site Loop and access connection to future development on the west through Turkey Outlook Road. This plat is consistent with the major development plan approved by city council on March 2, 2022, and the construction site plan approved by the Development Review Committee on January 11, 2023. The DRC recommends approval at its meeting on September 12, 2023. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the plat. The recommended motion is to approve the Oakview Plat. Staff is available for questions.
Any questions for Jean? Not anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve the plat for Oakview.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Oh, second.
Second by Commissioner Blasquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, the Ridge.
Again, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to approve the Ridge Plat. The subject property is located north and south of Boy Scout Road, west of Okoye Apopka Road, east of State Road 429 and Benia Road, and is approximately 241 acres in size. The applicant has submitted. The applicant has submitted the Ridge Plat for consideration of creating 13 lots and the Bronson Lake Drive, a parallel facility for Boy Scout Road. This plat also dedicates three rights-of-way tracks to the perpetual use of the public and establishes recreation tracks to serve the entire Ridge PD. Access points are proposed on Bronson Lake Drive, Boy Scout Road, and Acoia Apopka Road. It is consistent with the major development plan approved by City Council on October 13, 2021. The DRC recommends approval at its meeting on September 12, 2023. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the plat. The recommended motion is to approve the Ridge Plat. Staff is available for questions.
Any questions for Jean? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve the plat for the Ridge.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Madison Oaks MF3 parcel.
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to approve the Madison Oaks MF3 parcel major development plan. The subject property is located on 3434 West Kelly Park Road, the southwest corner of State Road 429 and Sadler Road, approximately 12 acres in size. The major development plan proposes the development of nine apartment buildings totaling 325 multifamily units and four stories high on 12 acres within the interchange district overlay of the Wild Oaks development. The interchange district overlays permitted a maximum of 1,008 residential units constructed based on the master plan, the calculation provided in the Wild Oaks development agreement. On April 11, 2023, the Planning Commission granted a special exception use permit for multifamily uses in the interchange district as required by the Form Based Code. The site design comprises of apartment buildings adjacent to Sadler Road and Effie Drive rights-of-ways and abuts the Wild Oaks 10-acre open space amenity recreation area on the southwest corner of 429 and Sadler. The ingress egress points are on Sadler Road and Golden Jam Road. Parking lot is located internally screened by the apartment buildings. Madison Oaks also includes its own amenity package that comprises of a clubhouse, pool, and a large pass of green area centrally located within the development. Sidewalks are located on the perimeter of the project area that connect the walkways to unit entrances. A pedestrian connection is provided on the north, northern portion of the complex that promotes pedestrian movement to the commercial pods of the Wild Oaks development. The site is currently vacant and mostly devoid of trees. Landscape plan proposes red maples, buttonwood, and southern magnolia trees on the perimeter of the project area. Accent and parking lot trees consist of grape myrtles, Japanese privet, and red maple trees, and a variety of palm trees are sprinkled internally and adjacent to the buildings. The proposed architectural renderings meet the Kelly Park Interchange Form Based Code as well as development design guidelines. The DRC recommends approval at its meeting on February 13, 2024. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the major development plan. The recommended motion is to approve the Madison Oaks MF, MF3 parcel major development plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve the major development plan for the Madison Oaks MF3 parcel.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blaskes. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, 1291 South Orange Blossom Trail Office Warehouse Major Development Plan. Bobby.
Good afternoon, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager with the Community Development Department. The applicant is requesting approval of a major development plan for a 103,449 square-foot office warehouse development in a total of seven buildings. Property is located at 1291 South Orange Blossom Trail and is approximately 11.2 acres in size. Of the 11.2 acres, three and a half are wetlands, which will be preserved, and that's detailed in the plan. Future land use and zoning is industrial for the property. The use is a permitted use in that zoning district. The site will be accessed by a full access point leading into the site via US 441. Left and right turn lanes will be constructed leading into the site from US 441. Total of 184 parking spaces are provided on-site, seven of which are accessible parking spaces. Stormwater is proposed to be discharged into a pond located on the southern portion of the site. Forty-three percent of the site is set aside as open space. This consists of stormwater retention and the preservation of the wetlands and site landscaping. Development Review Committee recommends approval. At the meeting on February 13, Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. Recommended, recommended motion this afternoon is approval. If you have any questions, staff and applicant are available.
Any questions for Bobby? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve the major development plan for the 1291 South Orange Blossom Trail Office Warehouse.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, FY 2324 Individual Distributed Wastewater Treatment Systems Conversion Project Master Service Agreement and First Amendment to the Master Service Agreement.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Well, my name is Deirdre at Buddhist Public Service Director. At the last council meeting held in February 21, 2024, the continuation of replacing the traditional septic tank in the Chivakland neighborhood with the IDWTS unit was unanimously approved by this council. Specifically, what was requested was the approval of the St. John Carter Sharing Amendment Number Four with additional of the existing fund equal to $1,178,737 to fully realize the project. Also listed or requested was the approval of the use of the Master Service Agreement with the amendment defining what repair and replacement costs are covered under the operation and maintenance provisions. And also the third issue there was the adoption of the Resolution Number 202403 stipulating the minimum condition for the individual distributed wastewater treatment system defined the responsibility of the various stakeholders. However, the proper decorum was not fully completed to properly record the First Amendment of the Master Service Agreement between on-site and the city of Apopka. This amendment need to be separately voted on together with, with the master agreement. So I now hereby respectfully request your approval of the IDWTS Conversion Project Master Service Agreement and First Amendment to the Master Service Agreement as was previously approved under February 21, 2024 council meeting.
Any questions for Deo? We beat this one pretty good. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve the Master Service Agreement and First Amendment to the Master Service Agreement.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, emergency designation under the Public Service Department for the Vic roadway wastewater system force main, Deo.
Yeah. Well, my name is Deirdre at Buddhist Public Service Director. I want to provide a brief synopsis on the pipe failure and emergency repair pursue and sewer force main along Vic Road and the vicinity area. The existing wastewater force main, as you can see from this depiction here, it showed that those, that the color green showed the existing 12-inch HDP pipe, which is a force main. The one showing orange is existing 18-inch DIP, which is ductile iron pipe. And the one that shows in red is existing 8-inch ductile pipe. And the one that's showing purple is the existing 12-inch PVC. These are all the force main system within that intersection. What happened in the one in the rectangle, the orange in the rectangle, has been evaluated back in 2020 by staff, and planning spec was prepared. And this was bid out for construction service, and MUC engineer was selected in April 5, 2023, to perform the replacement. The construction work commenced back in November 28, 2023, and the replacement of the 2,300 feet of DIP along the east side of Vic Road, shown in the yellow rectangle, had commenced. The work commenced back in, in November, and in February 12, 2024, while the contractor was completing installation of a temporary bypass to make the connection to the upstream system of the, of the ductile iron pipe. The section in the yellow failed, as he was planning to do so. That section was not in the contract. That was outside of the contract. So as a result, we were in desperation. We had to fix that area. Water was coming out of the ground, as you can see some of the picture here. And that was the only section that had remaining DIP pipes, well, for that section. So this was made since we are in this critical case here to remove and replace that ductile iron pipe with, and, and replace it with PVC because it was already ruptured during, during the construction. For this emergency, the fallen repair was required. We, we replaced the failed DIP. Vic Road, while the depression and base failure was temporary patch, carbon gutter was, was, was repaired. And also on Ponkin Road, the depression and base failure was temporary patch, and carbon gutter was also repaired. Road were both temporary stripe. All the sewer flow was temporarily shut off from this area until the repair is done, and the sewer from the upstream lift station had to be transported to the downstream system. And that was a phenomenal task to divert all the flow coming there and to take them back to reality. So what had happened, we could not, in this emergency situation, find a vendor who will, who have all these pipes. So we had to, to call in various vendors. We talked to Providence, and they were able to provide, provide us three pieces. We talked to Frontline and Coleman, and they were able to provide some section of this pipe that we were, um, used to replace. The preliminary cost estimate for the pipe received so far amounted to $6,000. An MUC engineer contractor removed the failed 18-inch ductile iron pipe and replaced it with 12-inch PVC off Ponkin Road. In addition, they also replaced the 18-inch pipe that was located in Vic Road. And none of these were as part of the contract, so we had to get into, use the emergency contract mode in order to get this done quickly on the site. So the cost of that operation came in the bill of $138,000. We then had to find a paving contractor to restore certain roadway work that we didn't have in the contract with, with MUC, well, engineering. So we had stage door on a piggyback contract, and they had given a code to remove the asphalt surface on Vic Road. And after all, the removal of, of the asphalt, stage door made temporary repairs to affect a segment of the roadway. This include the base, the subbase, the pavement, carbon gutter, and the total cost for Vic Road alone was $174,194,000. The stage door will commence preliminary work on March 30, and this will be on Ponkin Road, because that was also damaged, and that was a county road, and the county would like us to repair that intersection. So the permanent repair of that road will be commenced on, on March 21. Reason being is because they could not find a paver and a miller to do, to perform that operation. They just submit the cost to us, and that cost was 215,000 to do the intersection. And the way that is different, that's a functioning classified road, so that has more thicker asphalt, and there are other structural stuff that you have to perform in, in building that, that roadway. We are still awaiting the invoice from Frontline and Coleman for the pipe fittings and pipe section, and also from Wind River Environmental for the transportation of the wastewater from the upstream lift station to the downstream system as a result of the temporary main shut, um, shut off. So today, why I'm here for the council is, is because we, we so far had expensed $537,194, and we want the council, well, request to accept and ratify this emergency fund so that we can disseminate what is fun to pay the vendors, which is Providence, MUC engineer by contractor, and stage door two.
Okay, any questions for Deo? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing and look for motion to approve the emergency designation under the Public Services Department for the Vic roadway wastewater system force main repairs.
So.
Got a motion by Commissioner Blaskes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3043.
Ordinance number 3043. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida statute 171.044, the here and after described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Michael Gentles, located at 1400 West Kelly Park Road, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and ineffective date.
June?
Good afternoon, this is June Zone Planner Two. This is an annexation item for 1400 West Kelly Park Road. The property is currently unincorporated, has, and has requested annexation to the city for residential development. The total size of, of the property is 5.06 acres, and it is currently vacant. The future land use is of surrounding properties is residential estate and residential very low suburban, and the zonings are RCE, PD, and T transitional. DRC has recommended approval of annexation, and the recommended motion is accepting the first reading of ordinance number 3043 and holding it over for a second reading and adoption on March 20, 2024. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions for June?
I just had a quick question, just to confirm. The developer, or once we get to that stage, they have to submit something along the lines of if there's any type of endangered animal on the site or anything like that, correct? And if there's a plan to remediate? I, I see Mr. Howell good enough.
For the record, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. Once we get in the development review process, they'd submit environmental level ones and those types of reports for endangered species to determine that, or any groundwater pollution or anything like that on the property.
Okay, perfect. I know it's close to a, a sanctuary for gopher tortoises, so just want to make sure that that's taken care of just in case, so thank you.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve ordinance number 3043 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3044.
Ordinance number 3044. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T transitional to CC, community commercial, for certain real property generally located at 734 South Orange Blossom Trail, Servants of God Ministries, Inc., comprising of .065 acres, more or less, providing for severability, conflicts, and ineffective date.
This is June Zone Planner Two again. This is a rezoning item for 734 South Orange Blossom Trail, requesting rezoning from T transitional to CC, community commercial, to develop the place of worship. The total size of the property is 0.65 acre. The property's future land use is commercial, and its surrounding properties are also commercial. The current zoning is transitional, and surrounding zonings are community commercial and regional commercial. DRC has recommended approval, and the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of rezoning. The recommended motion is accepting the first reading of ordinance number 3044 and holding it over for the second reading and adoption on March 20, 2024. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for June? Anybody from public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve ordinance number 3044 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Okay, I'm going to say second.
Second by Commissioner Blaskes. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3045.
Ordinance number 3045. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T transitional to IL, light industrial, for certain real property generally located at 135 Hermit Smith Road, owned by Maryland Esbro Hand Trust, comprising of 7.23 acres, more or less, and providing for severability, conflicts, and ineffective date.
This is June Zone Planner Two. This is a rezoning item for 135 Hermit Smith Road, requesting rezoning from T transitional to IL, light industrial for the outdoor storage business. The total size of the property is 7.23 acres. The property's future land use is industrial, and its surrounding properties are also industrial. This current zoning is transitional, and surrounding zonings are PD, transitional, light industrial, and residential single-family 1A. The DRC has recommended approval, and the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of rezoning. The D R C has recommended approval and the planning commission anonymously recommended approval of rezoning. The recommended motion is accepting the first reading ordinance number 3045 and holding it over for the second reading and adoption on March 20th, 2024. Stefan Aplican is available for questions.
Any questions for June? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 3045 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3046.
Ordinance number 3046. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida statute 171.044. The here and after described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Investments Alliance, LLC, located at 2518 Haas Road, comprising 4.17 acres, more or less, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts and an effective date.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Amir Hamza. I'm a planner one. The request is to annex one 4.17 acre parcel into the city of Apopka. The subject property is located at 2518 Haas Road and is a site of Investments Alliance, LLC. The parcel is contiguous to the city limits and is eligible for annexation pursuant to Florida statute 171. Assignment of a city future land use and zoning designation will occur at a later date through action by the city council. The D R C recommends approval of annexation for the Investment Alliance LLC property and recommend a motion is to accept first reading of ordinance number 3046 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on March 20th, 2024.
Any questions for Amir? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 3046 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Real quick question because we're seeing a whole bunch of these. And I think Commissioner Nesta has brought this up in the past. We're going to have a whole bunch of piano key individual.
Jim, Jim or Bobby, y'all want to come down?
What? We're going to have a whole bunch of these long skinny piano key type of single residential neighborhoods. What what staff doing in terms of getting in front of this stuff? Because, I mean, we got to do something. I mean, we can't have these long, narrow, single individual neighborhoods stacking right next to each other.
Some of these, Jim Hay, Community Development Director, some of these property owners just want to come into the city. Others, like this one, they actually have a plan for, I believe this previous one actually have a road frontage and they're looking to do four units on it just along a roadway. Some of the others are just annexing because they they know what's going to be coming eventually to that to their site. Both of these, I believe, are all just the two dwellings per acre because they're not in the K P I area.
I know, but both indicate that they're doing a multi multi-property neighborhood.
Correct, correct. It's.
So it's not just annexing because of what's happening in Apopka. It's they are intending.
To become part of that. Yes, sir. Yeah.
Right. So my point being is that if we're just going to like go like this and say it's okay, that's I guess that's one thing from staff. But to me, there's valid concern if we've got a long, long neighborhood, very narrow width, and we're going to stack these individually right next to each other because there are several spots within our city that are still green that this is going to happen to. Do we have a revision for relooking at the land development code again? Now that we're seeing this more pervasive within Apopka, we should probably be thinking forward what we're going to do about it.
Well, right now, there's no, there's, there is no requirement that they have to make it a certain size in order to annex in. That would be kind of exclusionary, land use zoning annexation in order to allow somebody the free will or free right to apply for for to bring their property into the city. The majority of these all can do that one line going in with a with a dead end. We've had those. Every city has those throughout that I've ever worked in.
Sorry, I'm, we're talking past each other.
Yeah, yeah.
I get that they want to do that. That's in their right. That's currently what's written. I'm saying forward looking, three years from now, five years from now, we still have a lot of these little, like I said, like piano keys. Do we want them all stacked next to each other with their own little one street out, one street in? You know, I I get that they're able to. But do we want to get something and think about how we strategize about saying how we handle these things going forward?
It is something, it is something to be concerned about. We we do encourage them to annex with neighbors when they when they have that opportunity. But right now, there's, there's nothing in the code that requires them to. And it would be something definitely to look at. It's just writing that code does say you can't annex unless you have a certain amount of frontage for a road. That's, that's the part that gets exclusionary.
So to Commissioner Becker's point, so when they want to annex in, do you go to the properties if there's a couple more next to them and say, hey, we your neighbors annex in, if you're ever thinking of selling, might be a great time to annex together so that you could.
Well, I mean, annexation is not my problem here.
Well, no, but it's the development.
Again, the problem is is we we you've put a crystal ball in terms of what they're going to do in our lead-in package. You're telling us that their intention is to create a subdivision. What I'm saying is that once the land is annexed and they're going to develop land, I don't, and again, this goes to a legal, you know, whether it's legal or not. But we got creative with the small box retailers, right? And said, hey, you can't have one more than, you know, two miles away from each other. Is there some language that we can consider to say, okay, a subdivision has to be of certain width? I don't know. I'm just thinking a lot of so certain width or what what have you that says, okay, there can't be these subdivision entrances just stacked next to each other on a roadway. I mean, that just doesn't seem like it's going to be plausible long term.
We do have entrance requirements and driveway requirements that, you know, that would preclude something like that to occur. They'd have to end up combining into with an existing subdivision somehow. Yeah, we do need to come up with some language in order to for a subdivision in order to be able to combine those into one entrance for a certain width. That is something that's a good concern.
Cliff, do you have any, any thoughts on that?
Well, among others, I'm not sure how you'd like this idea, but there are service roads. There where you have an entrance off of a main drag and then require the development to provide cross access and then essentially a much narrower service road to get to an entrance. So you don't have road entrance after entrance after entrance after. So that's one way. Visually, yeah, you may like it, you may not, but that's a way. And I'm sure there are other ways, but cross access is a is a thing. And it's because of curb cuts or having access off of drags, which slows things down. It's particularly bad, for example, off of State Road 50 and all the businesses that are developing out in the Claremont Way. So but that's, they, there's also if there's side roads, you can go out and make them come in the back and things of that nature. But with subdivisions, a little bit difference harder.
Is something we can look at, though. It's a good idea.
Now, now's the time as we're.
Yep.
So now, when I, when I did see this one, adjacent to it, there is a subdivision that's going to be built there.
I'm trying to remember.
I see that. That's a subdivision that's going to be built to the right of it.
Yeah, Rainbow Ridge, right to the southeast.
So there's no connectivity? I thought that was required.
Now, this, this is the one that has the the existing road and they're planning on, they aren't planning on actually accessing Kelly Park or Haas Road. They're going to be annexing, I think that's Chandler Road there, or McGuire Road. They're going to be accessing that with their private driveways for homes.
And this is not part of the K P I?
No.
Everybody good? All right. Thank you, Jim. Next up, ordinance number 3048.
That's it.
Ordinance number 3048. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Apopka, Florida amending chapter 58 solid waste of the Apopka Code of Ordinances to reconcile the provisions of chapter 58 related to private refuse collection services with any roll-off container solid waste collection service franchise agreements to establish key requirements and essential clauses for entering non-exclusive franchise agreements for roll-off container solid waste collection services, providing for codification, providing for severability, providing for conflicts and providing for an effective date.
Josh?
Afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, Josh Robinson, Public Services. So, yeah, just a little brief back up to the to the franchise agreement. We're basically just doing a little housekeeping to bring the ordinance and our franchise agreement into into agreement. Roll-off, the roll-off franchise more generally, roll-off service is generally used for construction. Of course, we're under a lot of constructions there, everyone knows. These trucks have, they carry a lot of weight. There is an impact to our roads. Any solid waste business, there can be problems with vermin, litter, if they're not managed and well implemented. We have illegal dumping is a problem in the in the area that could be related to unmanaged roll-off services. And the, so the roll-off franchise is not exclusive. Any, any business that wants to provide the service in the city can can apply for the franchise. And it's in return for the privilege used in our infrastructure to provide the waste services and they must enter into an agreement with us that stipulates service standards and requirements. The franchise gives us some control over the haulers, the hours of service, the maintenance on the trucks, you know, the labeling of their their equipment and trucks. It promotes competitive service-oriented refuse operations, generates revenue through fees that we charge the haulers. And the agreements can be structured to encourage environmentally responsible practices. Longer-term contracts can bolden haulers to make the necessary investments in our community to get the most economic benefit for themselves. In general, other communities I've worked with, roll-off franchises tend to run between 10% to 25% of the roll-off franchises revenues, which we're in, basically in that range. Again, it's not exclusive. It's not advertised, although it's part of our code of ordinances and most haulers are used to this. They, part of their due diligence, they check with any jurisdiction they work in for various franchises and operating requirements. It establishes some basic criteria on their operations, as I said, hours of service. It gives us some oversight measures and we charge franchise fees. We currently, they're charged $80 a monthly administrative fee and then $25 per pull that they make. There's just a summary of from 2020 through 2023, the total franchise fees that we've collected has went from $65,000 to $256,000 in 2023. So those generate significant.
And where does that money go or maybe this might be a question for Blanche? It goes to sanitation. Okay. Yeah, thank you.
And so that's generally the franchise. The, with the hearing before you today, that's we were previously, the previous city administrator had us start using a franchise agreement that spelled out the details of of the franchise. However, at the time, we, there was never any reconciliation with the code of ordinance. There was a lot of cross references that just didn't match up. So there was also a lot of practices that we just don't have the time and ability to do. And so we removed some of those. And some of them were a little invasive as far as, you know, the interaction on their daily operations. So we just cleaned that up. And, yeah, this this kind of streamlines Holly. With the attorney's office was great getting this cleaned up. Gets it just streamlined. It references the franchise agreement. So that gives us the flexibility to be a little more responsive to to market conditions or needs for the city.
Okay. Any questions for Josh?
Yes. Ms. Robinson, you've been super helpful recently with a lot of my resident requests. So thank you so much for that, being responsive. I know this had come up a few months ago and I had a lot of questions. And this really did help to answer a lot of it. And just to confirm, what this does not only cleans it up, but kind of gives it codify, so to speak, the teeth the city has to enforce our ordinances, provisions, things like that, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody from the public?
Albert McGee, 3603 Golden Gem Road. I think it's difficult for a member of the public to understand exactly a lot of what the city business is and how it can benefit residents in ways that it wasn't necessarily intended to. But if the city can have ordinance as to these roll-on and roll-offs, with the current state of development in Apopka and how many homes are being built, there's a significant amount of material that's been put into the landfills. That shouldn't really necessarily be where it's going. We also have a problem of homelessness. There's about 5% of wastages on any home built in our ordinance structure. Is there any way that we can provide a situation where there's with the money that's been brought in from these franchises, some way to separate material that could be reused for the benefit of the homeless people rather than just filling landfills?
Anybody else? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 3048 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta? Second. Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2023-41. Blanche?
Resolution 2023-41. A resolution of the city council of the city of Apopka, Florida amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022 and ending September 30th, 2023, providing for a budget amendment.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Blanche Sherman, Finance Director. There it is. It appeared. Resolution number 2023-41 for F Y 2223 budget, budget amendment number 16. This is, we're at the end of the year. We're trying to close out the year. So we're cleaning up a few things. And just as last year, the casualty insurance premium tax for fire and police, these are the state contributions to the pension plan. They always come in in the latter fiscal year, so they came in in '24, but we have to recognize them in F Y 23. And therefore, this is a budget amendment to do so. For the firefighters, the amount was 373, 647, and for police, 667, 334, totaling $1,049.81.
Any questions for Blanche? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve resolution 2023-41.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next up, resolution 2024-03.
Resolution 2024-03. A resolution of the city of Apopka, Florida adopting the minimum conditions of approval for the individual distributed wastewater treatment system conversion project, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Commissioner and Mayor, this was discussed again at the February 21st, 2024 meeting. Approve. Again, it did not follow the proper decorum. It was now read out and the item need to vote on separately. So I hereby seek your approval of this resolution 2024 juridice for the minimum condition for the individual distributed wastewater treatment system defined the responsibility of each stakeholder.
Okay. Any questions for D O? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve resolution 2024-03.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. All right. City Council reports. Commissioner Velazquez?
Missing one.
No, we still have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes, yes, yes. Resolution 2024-.
05.
05.
Resolution 2024-05. A resolution of. Resolution 2024-05, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023 and ending September 30, 2024, providing for a budget amendment.
Good afternoon again, Mayor and Commissioners, Blanch Sherman, Finance Director. Resolution 2024-05 for FY23-24 budget. I have six items before you. The first one relating to the Utility Operating Fund Reserves for the Emergency Designation that Deo just shared with you, I think it was item number six on the agenda for tonight. That total amount is $537,194. The second item, we're looking at using $850,000 out of the Utility Impact Fee Fund Reserves for the water treatment plant facility. It was a barrel pit that was used, a barrel pit to reuse storage and pond. This is not my expertise, okay? For liner, pipes, and pump installation and improvements. So, that's a project they didn't want to proceed on, and we're going to take $850,000 out of reserves for that, and that fund does have those reserves available. General Fund Reserves, these are some earmarked funds of the Duke money that we talked about a few months ago, about $250,000. This is for a conceptual and final design permitting and construction of a permanent solution to reduce the flooding of the lakes and homes and roads in the regions surrounding Border Lake, Lake Cortez, Pied Mountain Lake, and Lake Page. So, just a conceptual study to start that out, about $250,000. And last month, you approved the Amendment Four of the grant with St. John's River Water Management District for the additional 90 units with onsite. And again, Deo talked to you again tonight, you approved those two items in regards to the First Amendment with onsite and the resolution associated with that for $1,178, 738,000. The fifth item is $450,000 coming out of carryover appropriations related to, this is the Northwest Recreation Relief Exit Road, in amount of $450,000. I do have a slide for you to show you some of the details related to that. That project equated to about $1.3 million. We have the remaining funds in the budget, we have a shortfall of about $450,000. And Radley is here to share with you any details pertaining to that, should you have.
Yeah, Rad, why don't you come on up?
Radley Williams, Parks and Recreation Director. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So, this is an exit roadway project that's been in the works for a couple of years now. We've had some budgeted funds throughout those years to get this project completed. We're just about done with the design component of this, which at that point, we can take it out to the street to put a bid out for the construction. The budget shortfall is, is a result of some of the changing in pricing for roadway construction over the years as the project's going on. We also saw a great opportunity to add some additional parking to kind of frame in the new inclusive playground and the sensory garden that we're working on at this time as well. So, just so I'm tuned in to finish this project, add some additional parking to the area that's going to be an improvement for that playground as well.
So, any questions for either Blanch or for Radley? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one?
Wait, one more.
I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, we got one more.
One more, and this is the JAG grant, and it was on the agenda tonight, and you did approve that under consent agenda. It's about $12,000, it's purchase equipment for the School Resource Officer and improve the training center. So, the total for this amended amendment is $3,278,280.
Okay, any questions? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve resolution 2024-05.
Some.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, Commissioner Velazquez. Any council report?
Well, being that we've had some of our members here in the chamber waiting to kind of hear what the end result was for our.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, after the meeting, we had decide, we decided as, as a council to, to have a workshop and to have the Fire Department Union come in the workshop and really kind of discuss just informational, so that we can kind of address some of the items. Because the, the union representative submitted 29 articles. So, we want to be able to kind of downsize that and try and address some of the issues that we feel that the city can address. And we haven't set a date yet, that's something that we're probably going to do up here right now, but just wanted to kind of get some feedback from, once all the commissioners kind of weigh in on this. But we have decided, the mayor and commissioners, we spoke with the attorney, Mandell, and we had an informational discussion, and we had some choices. And we decided in the best interest for the Fire Department, our members, and for the city, that a workshop would help try and move this negotiation forward. So, I don't really want to touch on none of the other things, because we've had, we've been, you've been here patiently waiting for this. So, I just want to yield to the next commissioner so that we can kind of discuss that.
Yeah, I mean, just to kind of put a bow on your statement, I think the, the idea, and some people get a certain idea of workshop, when you hear workshop, it's informal, you know, maybe not something that comes as a result of it. But I think there was, you know, there, there is legitimate implications that if you just jump right into foregoing magistrate, the legal implications of what we then become as a result of that decision. Whereas, you know, where we're hamstrung as, as a council is, there's not the ability to have a free exchange of thought openly. And what that allows us to do is pressure test both union representation to this council and this council back to union representation, because we all have blind spots in, in these negotiations. We're all, there, there's finer points that we all need to work out. And I think having doing that gives us a richer recommendation to a potential magistrate, too, to say, these were worked out through that free exchange of thought. Now, I think we, we kind of came to the idea, we can't just boil the ocean with maybe all 29 that are outlined within a letter from the union council. But I think it would be in our best interest to prioritize things that have budgetary impacts first and foremost. And then, whereas we may, as individual council members, have some self-identified lack of experience or blind spots as it relates to procedural or administrative items, that may, that may be something that we rely more heavily on a magistrate to work out. But I think having a discussion about budgetary items, which out of the 29, there's a lot that have budgetary implications, we prioritize that and have that, that dialogue. Because then, you can definitely get a heat check, and I, and, you know, not to disclose all the, the language that we used in, in the meeting, but then you have a packaged recommendation both from this council collectively, as well as the administration, that then could be given to the magistrate to say, yeah, you guys are kind of in line with thinking, and let's, let's move forward. But I think us having a healthy exchange in an open forum is going to be the right way to go.
Okay, anybody else want to add anything?
I look forward to the workshop. And I think by doing that, we'll have a better understanding as to what it is that we need to do and how we can move forward.
Yeah, and so, the, the point, we use workshop, and again, it does sound informal, as if we're wasting time, and that's not the goal, it's to have the dialogue together and say, okay, yes, we agree to that, perfect. Tell our attorney to write that up, send it over, next one, okay, we agree to that, let's move it over. So, he'll finalize that and get whatever kind of language. But I guess where, personally where my concern was, he described the, the process that would be if we skipped a special magistrate, which is not an issue. It's, it comes down to, we become the judge and jury at the time. And instead of us being able to kind of give and take, it's you present your side, you present your side, and it's kind of a yes or no, or we just come up with something random. And I didn't like that, because I want to be able to go back and forth. Let's, let's ping pong it a little bit to where we get to that, that spot that makes sense. So, that's where I didn't like the, that part, where he said that we really can't have that type of dialogue or that conversation. So, that was really concerning to me, because I want to be able to go back and forth in that capacity. And I think, to Commissioner Becker's point, everyone made, everyone's on the same approach of this, is let's go through the money stuff first, that's always kind of slowed this process down. Let's go over the money stuff, what are we willing to spend? What are you guys willing to bend on a little bit, whatever it may be, or if we need to time things out on a certain amount? So, this will help to get us where we need to be, I think, and much quicker. And I'm fairly certain our attorneys reach out to your attorney to kind of make sure that you guys are going to be comfortable with it, you guys discuss that. But I think it's going to also expedite this process as well, versus kind of that more formal, because it's my understanding, too, that both attorneys then need to be prepared to present cases to us, and that's going to slow this down. So, I think this meets what we all need, just in a slightly different fashion. And hopefully, you guys are agreeable to that, and it, it makes sense. But I do think that this will be able to get us where we need to be, and not just, okay, we got a workshop done, we're done. It's going to be, nope, here's our action items, our, our union attorney, or our labor attorney, go ahead, write this up, this is where we're moving. So, hopefully, that makes sense, and it's not, hopefully, it's in the same understanding what you guys were going for as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, so Commissioner Velazquez, we can go back to, you have any other items?
Oh, okay.
I mean, we have.
Well, anyway, I have some, some stuff here. We have, of course, I just want to remind everyone that we do have, Caitlin was here, that we, next Wednesday, March 20th, we do have a workshop here for the city downtown Apopka, Main Street, Apopka. We have the City Charter Commission for us, which would be, I believe it's March next week also, right?
13th, but the Main Street is the 20th.
When is it?
I think the Main Street is the 20th.
The, right, the Main Street is the 20th, and ours, the 13th. I had the 15th, that's why I was asking. And that's at, what time again? Five o'clock, from five to seven, and that's important. And I hope that our residents do come out and participate in that, that's very important for us. I want to thank Blanch. We, for a few weeks there, we were having the chamber ask for, and the chamber actually presented an emergency resolution regarding, you know, asking for 3% to go up to 10%. So, I had asked our CFO to research, and, and what the ask was, has there been a loss of a contract by, with the 3% by our city, by the contractors, local contractors? And she, I'm, I'm looking at this, I'm sorry, I'm reading it also. CFO Blanch came back and said that the awarded ITB contracts in the last five years have been 15, and the vendors that are based locally and were selected were four. So, I, I don't see where 3% has done any damage or has eliminated any of our local contractors from being able to bid and win a contract. So, I'm, I don't know why we would even consider raising it to 10% at this time. So, that's, I just wanted to touch base on that. And again, the chamber has not really contacted us, or any individual, to kind of give us any hard data as to why that ask was there. So, it's, we're all open to, to discuss that with them. But for now, I just wanted to kind of address that and say that at this, at this juncture, I don't see why we would consider raising the 3% to 10% if we don't have anything to show that a local contractor has lost a bid because it was more than 3%. So, wanted to kind of just highlight that, over the weekend, we had the Spring Pops at the Saturday Sounds. It was really very nice. Unfortunately, we had the siren somewhere around 6:15 or 6:20. So, they were not able to do an intermission. They did one more song after the siren, and we had to cut the Spring Pops short around 6:30, right? Was that, but besides that, we were all really excited, and we had some tables rented, and so we had a good time. It's always a beautiful concert, and it is always well-attended. And then, on Sunday, we had our community band, which is Music to My Mind. And I had the pleasure of being the MC, and it was really a good turnout, although it poured rain. But still, the residents did come out, and I appreciate the residents that do come out and support it. And I hope that we can grow that particular community band, because it's a symphonic band and a wind band. So, that's basically all that I have. And then, oh, next week, March 12th, we have the reception over at the Highland Manor, which is the Apopka Boy Scout Golden Eagle Dinner. And it will be, the honoree that they're honoring is our Vice Mayor Commissioner Kyle Becker. That's pretty much it.
You better finish.
Thank you.
Mr. Becker?
I mean, my priority was, obviously, the fire negotiation, get some traction there, so we can discuss that. I will be making my rounds again, because if I'm hearing that the kitchens are still not done, these firehouses, I mean, come on, I'm, I'm making my rounds again, and I, and I've got, what, a month left? I'll do my little picture round again, but this is, come on. Let's get this thing going. That's all I have to say.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, I just want to say, the Black History Program that was held was outstanding and well-attended. And so, want to thank the city for their participation in, in that endeavor. And there were several other Black History Programs that took place throughout the city. I was able to attend the one at Pied Mountain Elementary, Pied Mountain Middle.
Pied Mountain Lakes Middle.
Yeah, and then the one at Apopka, at, pretty sweetly, Elementary as well. So, those are great, great events, celebrating Black History. And this month is Women's Appreciation Month, and Friday is National Women's Appreciation. So, just want to recognize all the women for the great things and contributions that they make to our society.
Thanks, Commissioner Smith. Mr. Nesta?
Just, I know Mr. Klepper had a couple of final questions, so let's, if we can't address those right now, if you can come up here, just so we can hear it in reference to the, what we discussed.
So.
Okay.
Alex Klepper, Apopka Professional Firefighter. So, just on what the statement, based on your decision, was. Not familiar with workshops being part of this, but that's fine. I, I, I understand that idea. Is the idea, did he express to you that, you know, tentative agreements are able to be made during these workshops?
Well, so it's, it's an understanding of where we both stand, and then it's, we direct both of our attorneys, say, okay, well, that's, we're, we're on the same accord on this one, let's move forward and knock it out. So, it's not an official binding, but it gets us to where we need to be, to where you're not having to sit down at a meeting, direct to your attorney, to direct our attorney, to get to the mayor, then, then hopefully gets to us. It, it expedites that, and we get to talk immediately together and say yes or no, or what's that look like?
So, the, the plan would then be, there's a workshop with all of you present, and your representation, the fire negotiating team, public, whoever else is able to attend. Then we would, then schedule negotiation following that workshop?
Correct, that would be the understanding, and, and anybody interrupt me otherwise. But to say, look, we've already knocked out, out of these 29, we knocked out 14 or whatever, let's get those locked in, done. Or, I mean, we can knock down all of them, we got all 29 done.
Because it, because that's the, is the goal, obviously, is to get things off the table. If we can get things off the table, then we, if we do still have to go to a special magistrate, then you can bring them five articles rather than 23.
Correct. And again, the goal is to get the, the financial side of this, the money side, which I think is, it's a heavy side of this, figured out first. I think that really slows us down a lot of it, not slows us down, but it's, it's the, the point of these. So, it's to focus on those upfront, and then be able to properly direct our council from there.
Sure. Is the pension study back? The, the study, the study on the study?
Joe, you heard anything from pension study? And then also the salary study, I don't. And then also the salary study, I don't.
Joe Patton, Director of Human Resources. So I did talk to the actuary today. They just received additional data that they requested from the Pension Board or from Empower. So they're looking over that data. They have some additional questions that they, that they have. That was supposed to, those questions are supposed to go to Empower today. So we're hoping, from what I understood from the actuaries, that study should be done by the middle of this month.
So, and to confirm too, we already have an actuary from our current pension accountant or firm that we can base our conversations on if we need to. Is that accurate?
I can't, I can't answer that question right now.
But I have one.
I'd have to.
I have one in hand.
You can. I mean, if you want to rely on that, you can.
I understood. That, that's all I needed to know, that we, there's one in hand that we can work with.
Yeah.
And if this one comes up that gives us different information, great, then we can run off that. But we have one in hand that we don't need to delay anything. There is one that we can base information off of.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, all right. So that was, obviously, that's a big factor, right? If you're looking at the, the whole thing of what we're trying to do here. If that's going to be a, we can't talk about a pension improvement, then it's really difficult. That, what's the point of a workshop? What's the point of all of it if we can't make decisions on things? So that timeline's really frustrating. Anyway.
In that case, we would go with whatever data we have in hand.
Which, correct. And that's, yeah.
So when can, uh.
So you're, timing.
Timeline. Because I got to have a workshop, a negotiations session, and then who knows, possibly scheduling a special magistrate. We're, we're, we're a year out. We're going to be at two years at, at this point.
So, and, and that was our concern too. And we discussed that. And personally, I'm not going to speak for anybody else. If we did the, if we bypassed the magistrate and went just directly to us, it would almost be the same timeline, if not worse, because again, both attorneys would have to compile cases for this. And so we're trying to get around that, that formality to get this done. So there was an attempt to create a date. I don't know, we're not there yet, I guess. But it was to confirm that your attorney wants to do this and that you guys are comfortable with. And if you are, let's get it done. I mean, I'm happy to make a date right now.
I kind of, yeah, I kind of understood from our attorney that we really didn't need.
It was more so waiting for their approval.
Right. It was waiting for the, for.
Union's approval.
A union's.
That they want, that they're even open to this. And I'd rather not call it workshop as much as it is a negotiating session. Because it really is a more, we're not finalizing it, but it really will have the power of finalizing once we dictate it to our, or illustrate it to our attorney. We did discuss that, obviously, the, the, the way that the, it flows is that our labor attorney speaks directly to our CEO and that we're more of a, we're there to consult, basically. But it, it was the understanding that once we finalize something or at least agree to it up here, that we will, all in one, have our labor attorney write that up.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, it, hopefully will take some time off that clock, because that was the issue we're running into in negotiations, is we'd make a proposal, well, I got to bring it back and get it. So.
So when is, when is your meeting? When is the union meeting?
When is our meeting?
Yeah, because basically, it's, it's you agreeing to the workshop.
Yeah. I have no issue with it. If, if both attorneys have to be present, then that's.
And they don't. We're not going to have our council there. Just be, so it, again, it doesn't muddy the water.
All right, tomorrow. But yeah, as soon, as soon as possible.
But I mean, I mean, think about it this way. I mean, to Commissioner Nesta's point, I mean, it's a, it's a free exchange of thought and pressure testing each other's points of view. If we're gonna, if, if there's a stance of 3,000 and we push back and do 2,000 and we come to middle ground at 2,500, okay, you may not be the best, you know, may not be the best choice, but that's what we've kind of come to agreement with. Okay, can we park that one? That way, it goes to a magistrate, if that's the route that we end up going with, hey, this has been, this is tried and true. There still may be some.
Well, they won't need to necessarily. If, if this workshop gets some general agreements on stuff, the will of the council, all of our proposals, and they get tentatively agreed to, they don't go to the special magistrate. It's off the table. Same as the 13 to 15 art, we have tentative agreements on certain articles. They don't go to him. He doesn't see him. So if we can.
So point being, is if all parties come to this in good faith, and I have confidence that I can speak for myself, I would come in good faith, that hopefully we can get to that point, right? And, and we can check things off the list. And that's why, when we had this discussion, let's prioritize the things that have a monetary or budgetary impact.
Same as your budget workshops you do. You guys make these decisions. There's nothing different, other than there's a length of a contract, but you guys did eight today.
Precisely.
Yeah. So.
Do you want to come up with one?
You guys, I mean, you guys have my email? Or do you want to do it live?
Sure.
All right, let's go.
But I would ask, you know, when, when all parties come, come to the table, there's certain benchmarking and certain data that we should come with, both from, and I know that you all have done a lot of research and, and the city needs to have a point of view on that as well. And I say city, that sounds so us versus you.
Sure.
The administration come up with, you know, our own level of benchmarking as well so we can have a very healthy conversation. I have confidence that we will, but.
Are you able to do the 27th of March?
Sure.
What time?
What time? Anytime.
Five.
Morning, afternoon, evening.
What's, the rest of the council, what do you, for the 27th?
Earlier the better.
Yeah, the 27th I have available.
27th, 5 o'clock?
Yeah, let's do five, because we need time. Done.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right.
I got a couple more things real quick, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, oh yeah, it was, it was.
It's, the Martin Street and Grossenbacher cleanup went really well. I had Apopka High School students there. The people of Lakewa Springs were there. My buddy Alex Peña did a pressure washing there. And Commissioner Blas was really helpful and many others. So just wanted to thank the community for showing up and, and honoring our veterans that, that died for us. Early voting is now until March 17th, 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. here at the VFW. Just got an email, actually, we all did, if I'm not mistaken, about, it's a workout group. The gentleman, Mr. Rais has come and spoke many times. It's out at the Northwest Rec. It's going to be, it's called the Oak Challenge. It's a workout competition I've actually participated in. Very cool. It's this Friday. So go out and watch. It's fun to see everyone else work out and not yourself. So that's it. Thank you.
Mayor Commissioners, sorry for being late. Just as I mentioned to you earlier, I was in with the Orange County Administrator. And the county commission has decided to bring back the, or is proposing to bring back the One Cents Sales Tax Initiative for Transportation. And some of the concerns that I have and, and you should have is that they're looking at bringing over $700 million in. And about 10% of that will go back to, and be distributed amongst the cities. Part of my discussion with them, I, I think we can all agree, we have mass transportation needs for Ling's and some others. But we also have needs here within our community. And to put 10% back to the communities, I think is a very small amount. Part of my suggestion was maybe we look at the sales tax model of what's created here, comes back here. That's what was expressed from my view. But you will be the final decision makers to decide if you want to support that initiative. So this was the first meeting. They're trying to get it on the ballot. To get it on the ballot, they have to have it go through the county commission. And it's got to be done on an April date. So they're trying to push this very fast. So I want you to be very aware of it. And you can also talk to your constituents out there and get their feelings, as well as getting with the commissioner that represents this area. I do know some of the other commissioners are having workshops. I didn't have a date or see a date that she had proposed. But I'll, I'll reach out to Christine and see what her feelings are on it, on her side. But I just want, I, I just don't think 10% coming back to the cities is fair. They're wanting to base it on population.
When this first came out, you know, they, they started out with one model, right? And then they came up with like two or three or four different models of how municipalities would get the fair cut of, of this money. The final two, to your point, I think it was both like 10% or whatever for the municipalities. The first model was, it was an automatic routing. But then the final model was, no, we would still have to go to Orange County.
And they're still proposing that.
To get a cut of that 10%.
Correct.
Whereas I don't see how that model, I could, I could position that with any sort of constituent to say, oh, we've got to go and make our case. Okay, well, we see what happened.
That's still the model they're trying to propose. And that was what was proposed today. And, and I, and again, I brought up, I said, why aren't we looking at something similar like they did over in Simmental County on, on the sales tax, you know, that's distributed by the state? That type of model? Let's come to a number that we recognize that needs to go to mass transit. And then the remainder be distributed by, by a, a sales tax model.
Yeah. And two more points on that topic. One of which, and I know that when they tried to position this before, it was almost on their website that they took our capital improvement plan of our own streets and put it under their website, almost leading the reader to say, hey, if you support this, these things will happen.
Yeah.
And I, I think that they need to be cognizant of, don't try and misinform. I'm not saying evil intent there. I'm just saying, they need to be intellectually honest with our, with our constituents. But then too, hey, I think it could easily get behind it if we use this to our advantage on what we've talked about in terms of infrastructure around here anyway. And come up with a thing around, you know, whatever the right amount would be, is improve turnover, potentially, roads that we've kind of half and halved over.
And this wasn't part of the discussion. But I, I brought up, I said, okay, y'all are collecting impact fee, transportation impact fees. What have you spent up here in Apopka? I said, you're moving the money down to Rosemont and other areas. My commission wants to see what's coming back to my community. I said, we've got an impact up here at PSR. What have y'all done? Y'all put a, a, a multi-unit apartment complex up there in your area, and you've waived the impact fees. What improvements are you making back up there? So I did, I did express my concerns. And I hope you support me in that, because I, I think we need our fair share back. And that's all I want back here is what's fair to our community needs to come back to our community. So I'll, I'll get off that moment and move forward. Secondly, the salary survey, we, my Joe and myself met with the salary survey guy via Zoom. He is completing his study. The pay bands are complete. He's ready to present those to you. He is working on the compression to give us a number on the compression. And my plan is to have a workshop from four to six before the next meeting on the 20th. So I know I've spoken to most of you, Commissioner, you weren't, Commissioner Nesta, you weren't here. But please put that on your calendar from four to six on the 20th for review of the salary and benefits study. And that'll be where you get to ask your questions and so forth. If you don't have anything major, then what I'll do is bring a resolution that night forward to adopt it and continue forward. Otherwise, if something comes up, I'll pull it. So.
Okay. Yeah, I have four to six salary review workshop.
Yeah. So that's on the 20th. And then.
That's a whole day of, because we have.
It is an all day. We, we, we got one meeting after another.
Then we have the salary review, then we have the city council.
Yep.
Are you feeding us?
More like, are we feeding them?
Yeah. So, and then lastly, just to give y'all a heads up, some of y'all may know, Jim announced to his employees, after 39 years in planning and 19 years on two occasions with the city, that he will be retiring from the city. I had a conversation with the mayor and have talked to Joe also to engage a headhunter to find a new planning director for the planning department. So when y'all get the opportunity, you may want to just thank him for his time and, and being here with the city. And we'll continue to move forward.
And it's just, it's June, sometime in June?
Yeah. His, his plan is to, to, to leave at the end of May. He's actually got some PTO to burn up and so forth. So he's going to actually go travel, but he'll, he'll come off the books in the beginning of the June.
Anything for anybody, Chuck? Okay. Thank you, Chuck. Next up?
Well, yeah, not to. Thank you for your service, Jim. We've, we've had many exchanges at the lectern and on the, on the dais and, and, you know, through the course of city halls. So appreciate your service. How, how long was it with city now? Because two cents? How much?
Over 19.
19. And then how much with Claremont?
Oh, that, that's just, that's just the top.
I know. How much in addition with Claremont?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
Yeah. I mean, you still have a, a few more council meetings giving us each time to kind of just say thank you to you. But, you know, for me anyway, as long as I've been here, you know, I knew I could always go to you. And like Commissioner Becker said, we didn't always agree. But you were always available and accessible. And sometimes in our private conversations, we had our little discussions where I didn't agree with something. So I appreciate your candor all the time and your willingness to always try and, you know, always, you know, presenting your side and why we do things. And you quoted the comprehension plan and land. I always looked to, can we change that? And, well, just wanted to say thank you. But you still have a few council meetings for us. So look forward to them.
Okay. Cliff?
All right. Let me see my turn on here. Okay. So just briefly, it was alluded to earlier, because we're obviously coming up on an election, it's important that the right information be out there. And I want to make sure that without going through the whole letter, that I got through the main points of the letter we got from the Office of Election Crimes and Security. The two relevant sentences, there is more, I'm not trying to say that they're not, but I'm cutting to the chase, are the following. And this is regarding Mr. Mox's candidacy. O E C S, the Office of Election Crimes and Security, has reviewed, has determined this complaint is not facially sufficient because the candidate eligibility and qualifications issue you have raised do not fall within the definition of elections fraud. Now, facially sufficient is important legally, because that means that if you take everything that was written as true, it doesn't matter. It's not fraud. It's not a crime. The last paragraph of the, or next to last paragraph says, the allegations do not contain specific facts or direct evidence of irregularities or fraud that may constitute a crime under Florida law. Thus, as alleged, these are both civil matters, which, as you might recall, because I've opined on this multiple times, I said at the very beginning, if there's a challenge to be made, it's another candidate or citizen, but the role of the city was not present after qualification. So that's it.
Thank you, Cliff. Appreciate it. Okay. Mayor's report. I want to just kind of dovetail off of Chuck's on the sales tax. So we have a, we have a group of mayors and city administrators, city managers that meet maybe quarterly, I guess, which is West Orange County, which includes Windermere, West, Windermere, Winter Garden, Okowi, Oakland, and Apopka. And so when we, we, we came up with the kind of a, the bullet points on the sales tax and what, you know, we as mayors could agree to. And, and I, I think the Commissioner Becker's points, I think, were kind of on the same pages. They had it flipped. They had 40% of the money going to road infrastructure and 60% going to transit. And I said, you know, for us in West Orange County, we need to flip that. So it's 60, 40. Also, the Commissioner Becker's point, that, that, that middle technical review committee of Orange County, I can't support anything that's got that in there with, Orange County's micromanaging, you know, the money. The 60, 40 is based on sales tax strictly. It's just an easy formula for everybody to, you know, so as populations go up or go down, every year it will adjust based on the, the, the sales tax formula. It's a complicated formula, but anyway, had Blanche trying to figure out how to make that, you know. But anyway, so, and then a couple of other points, I said that we, we is, you know, as, as I met with Mayor Demings, I said, Mayor, I said, I think we as a city council would come up with a five-year project list, whatever that is. And that we would vote on it as a council, that we will, in the first five years, based on these dollars, we will complete these projects. And not only will we vote on it at the city council, we'll, we'll, we'll advertise it in the Apopka Chief and the West Orange Times. So we're committed, if, if, if we get it the way we want it, which is 60, 40, roads to transit, and we get, you know, the, the sales tax formula that we could, we as mayors could agree to it. So.
Mayor, I, I'll share with you, they're, they're proposing the 22, 20, the 2022 model again. They're, they don't seem to be bending on that, just so you know.
So I guess, West Orange County, none of us were for it last year or last time, except, I think Oakland might have been for it. Everybody else didn't, didn't weigh in. You got something, Cliff, on that?
Yeah, it was something totally unrelated, but I was, I just remembered it. And that is that the last time we spoke, I had spoken at the Charter Review Committee about the whole rural boundaries thing. And what has happened since that meeting and this one is the legislature intervened and said, you can't do that. And it's specifically directed at Orange County Charter Review Camp. So for the moment, that's a non-issue.
Yes. Okay. All right. Okay. Okay, let's see, what else? Early voting was brought up, obviously, it's March seventeenth from ten AM to six PM, March fourth through the seventeenth at the Community Center on Central. We, this, I know it was brought up, kind of, I guess we've got two art contests going on, and this is the one that's in front of you, and it's, it's honor of the past through changes for, for change for kids, contest criteria kindergarten through twelfth grade, picture a poem with the theme honoring the past through chains, submit by Thursday, March fourteenth. Please have the student's name, age, phone number, and the winner will be announced on March twentieth. And the last thing, I don't know if this is.
Who's, who's running this one?
Dr. Jackson.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Last thing, I'll, I guess this is good news, the columbarium will be installed on Monday at eight AM. And so if you're looking for a spot and you like columbariums, come on down at eight AM on Monday and watch us put it on the, the slab. So thanks, Susan, thanks, Radley, for getting that. It's been, you know, trying to get the, the cranes and the, and the columbariums themselves all kind of matched up with Winter Garden has been a little bit of a challenge, but we, we got it done. And last, I'd like to thank the council, this was one of the most productive meetings we've had in a while, so I want to thank y'all for making this a productive meeting.